Yes.
Okay, we're ready to go. We're current. Yep. As Chair of the Northampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Northampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 95030545769. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website, sau21office@www.sau21.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email reevans@saun21.org. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether or any was in the room with you, which is required during, under the right to know laws. We will now take roll call.
Cindy Burke.
Present and alone.
Greg Duffy.
Present and alone.
Martin Tavishian.
Present and alone.
Nermina Peterson.
Present alone for the moment.
And Tom Von Jess.
President Marian Von Jess is in the room.
Okay, I have the vote, or I have roll call taken.
Thank you, Rhonda. Our first item on our agenda is public comment. And so as per these past few meetings, if you're in the attendees list, you can hit the raise your hand button and that will identify you to Rhonda and she can open it up for a question. So we shall give a couple of minutes for people to sort through the technical details. We need like Jeopardy music that plays while we're waiting.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody doing the raise the hand feature. If I see that, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, if it pleases the board, I'll move on from this, but I would say over the next couple itinerary items, if somebody does have a question that they were kind of late to getting to, if you guys not mind addressing that as it comes up, just over the next couple of agenda items, sometimes people have trouble accessing. We're good with that?
Sounds good.
Okay, next item, item three, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 7th, 2001.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion, comments, corrections, anything? Nope. Okay.
Cindy Burke. Yes. Greg Duffy.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
And Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. Moving on to correspondence and commendations. Do we have any correspondence and commendations?
I just have a couple of real short ones. The first one, I know it's been kind of ongoing, but our custodial staff has just been doing such amazing work above and beyond. And Stu Spooner in particular with the plowing and the, you know, trying to get organized for the spring and, and contact companies about tents again. They've just been doing a huge amount of work and we're very appreciative. They did a great job setting up for the deliberative session in the gym last week and just wanted to give them a shout out for that. Also wanted to give student government, the middle school student government a shout out for their continued work with the Friday messages and the Spirit Week that I think you'll hear a little bit more about. And then the last group was the fifth grade team and some collaboration with our art teacher, Marsha Zavas, which has been really interesting and exciting. So they typically do a collaboration unit with writing and art. And so this year they actually made a video with all kinds of green screen backgrounds and, you know, talking about what it's like when art speaks to you. And there were some middle schoolers that, that were engaged in that as well. And, you know, they, it was, it was just very well done and a great example of using technology to keep our, some of our traditions and things that we do alive. So to give them a shout out, that would be Brenda Tharp, Tricia Markie and Marsha Zavas.
Thank you, Sue.
Glad Senor J to that as well. He had quite the starring role in the film.
I'm really sorry. He was hysterical. I forgot all about that. He was hysterical. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Becca. Any additional correspondences or commendations? All right, moving on to our student representative report. Kayla, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's just, I love doing these reports.
We love having, we love having you here, Kayla.
Thank you. So exciting. All of the middle school started going back into the building once a week. Not every student chose to go back, but it seems as though everyone enjoyed being in the building. It was strange to have to wear a mask all day long and to have such a short school day, but seeing teachers and friends was wonderful. Our teachers graciously found time in our schedule so that we could go outside and we also did some of our classes there as well. In one class, we took chalk and drew on the blacktop, while in another, we stood in the classroom and debated about silly things with each other. That was a personal favorite of mine because I got to hear two people go on and on about whether schools should be year round. I do not think it should be year round. Schools are not this up. This month, there were lots of exciting activities that took place for middle school students outside of school. First of all, Dungeons and Dragons Club, or D and D, started up for anyone interested in grades six through eight. I know that lots of kids were excited about this fun virtual activity that would connect them to other middle school students. Last year, when I was in seventh grade, I played D and D and in my opinion, it's a really fun game. So I hope that all the students who are playing it now have a great time. Next, Mrs. Tharp is running a six-week virtual coding program after school for fifth through eighth graders. This program is being run through the Coder Z platform, which students have used before, so they can use their previous knowledge to learn new things and solve missions with their team. Also, as you may know, seventh and eighth graders have joint advisory meetings every Tuesday and Thursday mornings. The purpose of these meetings is to give students a place where they can get direct help, communicate with their advisors and connect with other students. Through these meetings, I have become closer with people in my own grade and made some new friends in seventh grade. I am grateful for all the time and effort all the advisors have put into planning our games and activities. However, I'm now even more grateful for all of the advisors because of a recent change that they made. They have started combining us every Tuesday morning. For example, I'm in Ms. Jones and Ms. Ladder Bush's advisory class. But this past Tuesday, I was combined in an advisory meeting with Ms. Getton and Ms. Vaz. It has been really nice to get to meet new seventh graders and see more eighth grade faces each Tuesday morning. We have played fun games like trivia and two truths and a lie to get to know each other better. These advisory meetings have been a fun and bright spot in everyone's weeks. In other news, the annual spelling bee was held on Thursday, January 28th. Thank you to everyone who participated. A special congratulations to Edward McNamara, who won first place, and to Sullivan Duffy, who won second place. February 15th is the 100th day of school this year. The first graders organized the gather food drive that has been going on for many years now. Each grade was assigned a specific item to bring into the building. The goal is that each grade collects at least 100 of their items to donate. Some of the items include shampoo, ketchup, oatmeal and soap. Based on the overflowing donation boxes I have seen at school, I have a pretty good feeling that we will reach our goal. Lastly, student government organized Beer Week for the whole school. This week, students have been dressing up for all of the different themes. On Monday, everyone wore pajamas. Tuesday was crazy hair and mismatch day. Wednesday was favorite sports team day. Today is dress up as your favorite character day and tomorrow is awareness ribbon day. It has been amazing to see so many people participate and enjoy putting on crazy outfits for school. Student government asked all the teachers to send in pictures of their students dressed up, so hopefully we will receive enough to make a slideshow that we can share with the community. This week has been filled with spirit and school pride, which has been great to see. I hope that everyone who is sitting at home doing virtual learning for Northampton School related Zoom meetings will feel excited because of all of the positive opportunities that took place for students this month and because of all the school spirit being shown this week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kayla. That was a very thorough and detailed report. Appreciate it. Does the board have any questions for Kayla? All right. See, that's what happens when you're so thorough. You take all the questions right off the table. So thank you for that again. And as always, you're welcome to hang out with us and listen to all the exciting stuff. I hear Matt has some really interesting financials today to talk about. But we do know that you also have homework and other priorities. So feel free to step off if you want to, but you're certainly welcome to stay and thank you again.
Thank you all so much. See you next month.
Bye, Kayla.
All right, moving on to school council educational update.
So we did have a school council meeting on January 13th and some of the topics discussed were, well, actually the first topic was we had a guest speaker and it was Chris Berry, who was the student government president. And so he presented to the leadership council, the ideas for Spirit Week. And then we had some discussions about parent conferences and how those would be scheduled and about the K5 literacy assessments, because we had our winter assessment window mid to late January. At the end of the meeting, we had a check in with all of, with each grade level representative to just kind of discuss about how folks at each grade level were feeling, mid-year check in. And we did have really open and honest sharing about stressors that are, you know, associated with this particular school year, shifting between remote and back to in-person learning from the shift before the holiday break when we, when the whole school went remote for 10 days and you know, there were, there's still some ongoing concerns just about health and safety. And actually Greg was with us. So if, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, but I think it was a really healthy conversation, just about checking in where, 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 where everyone is. And I think we have a wonderful staff that is able to support one another. And so conversations like that really help us to be able to do that.
It was, it was a really, it was a really good meeting. It was very insightful for me as sort of an outsider to kind of listen in. And I, I would like to thank all the teachers and staff involved in that. They were very candid in talking about some of their concerns, professional and personal. And it was, it was really good and open. And I think that's, you know, that kind of transparency and honesty with each other is what helps move organizations forward. So Sue, appreciate, appreciate the efforts by all. Any school council questions?
So just one question on the folks that have concerns understandably. Susan, are there things that we can do as a board to give you resources that you need to take care of? Any accommodations that need to be made for, for our teachers and staff?
So at this point, I think honestly, and I may have said this before, but in my opinion, the number one thing that folks could do with that for us is to rally around K-12 educators being moved up to on the, on the vaccine list. I think, I think the vaccination cycle that on the state level is, is as it is in every state, moving more slowly than people anticipated. And I think there's a real desire to move forward with that. And, you know, any, any, any influence that, that folks have or any, any comments that they can make publicly to, you know, the governor or whoever might hold those strings on, on teachers behalf, I think would be greatly appreciated and felt like a big support to us.
So I can share that the New Hampshire School Board Delegate Assembly met a couple of weeks ago and we had a unanimous vote to send, to request the New Hampshire School Board Association send a letter to Governor Sununu making that exact request. So I hear you loud and clear and I'm glad to report that we took that action.
That's, that's really great to hear. I mean, I think that things like that make us feel supported and, you know, like, like, you know, everyone's working very hard to try to do the best they can. And there are stressors and worries about, about the health situation in the pandemic. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sue? All right, moving on to continuing business. Item six on our agenda is reopening plans update.
I can start that off for us. So we're, we're proud to share the, the full in-person plan for grades six, seven and eight tonight with the board, the community. Susan, Becca and Ayesha have worked diligently to create a completely new schedule for the middle school so as to accommodate the students every day. The teachers have been successfully implementing the hybrid plan, as you know, while gearing up for the new in-person plan. The schedule rotates every three days, ends at 1:20 every day. So teachers will have common planning time after the students leave. Special services will also be in person during flex time during the day and after school hours. Dr. Hobbs sent a letter to families across all SAU 21 districts to provide instructions regarding how to request to move from remote instruction to in-person or vice versa. He sent that letter last week, which he'll get into a little further. I'll turn it over to, to Dr. Hobbs and then I think Susan will have a few comments after that. Thank you.
Sure. I'll give you kind of the perspective from the Remote Learning Academy where we are with calendars and how it, how it leads into this whole reopening plan for the middle school, which I think, you know, deserves a lot of credit for the administration, the faculty in Northampton. So as we all know, particularly in K4, the Remote Learning Academy has been operating basically as a steam release valve for in-person models, right? It's peeled off enough students so that it makes our in-person model viable across the board. We have a current Northampton enrollment of about 25 K through four in the RLA and we're, we're basically in the process of unwinding the, the Remote Learning Academy on a chunk by chunk, a trimester by trimester basis. So as Dr. Eric Killian said, I put out a call, we put out a call last week, last Friday with a due date of February 19th for students, if they wanted to make a transition from, from remote into in-person. So we will, we're in the process of collecting data right now. We're getting responses trickling in, but we'll have solid data come February 19th in terms of the number of students that want to make that move. That'll give us, well, three weeks, if you don't count break, to start hammering away at our models, making sure that our models are concrete and we give parents something accurate to react to. And the idea would be at all of our districts, we would be able to implement more face-to-face models trimester three. I think the schedule you're going to see tonight at the middle school is pretty impervious to this process. Meaning, meaning I think we're accounting for any, any of the enrollment changes that, that we could face as a result of this. But we do have to worry about parents understanding what they're reacting to, right? So you're going to see a five-day week model tonight for the middle school and many parents, when they're asked the question in person or remote, they feel like, you know, they're reacting to a two-day model or a hybrid model. We want to make sure that they know they're reacting to a five-day model. So there will be a little bit, bit of follow-up work there. But all in all, I think we're on a good path and I think we're aligning the SAU in a way that can get us back face to face. So I can answer questions now or we can give, do the plan and then answer any larger questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hobbs.
Yep.
Any questions for, for Caroline or David? All right. Sue?
So I can pick it up from here. So as, as you know, from, from the administrative documents that, that you could see, the plan is to bring students back five days a week. Beginning the third trimester, we would be following the same safety protocols, six-foot distancing, mask wearing, plexiglass dividers for small group instruction and designated spaces for each cohort. The, the adults would go from room to room rather than, than the students moving from room to room in this particular model. And we will be sending, like I plan to send a letter tomorrow and resend Dr. Hobbs's letter so that it's clear that both the K to five and the six to eight preferences or any changes that parents may make are on the same timeline. So the letter that I plan to send tomorrow will be really clear that the choice is five days in-person, six to eight, or full remote six to eights, because we need to continue to offer both, both options for families that may choose to elect the, the fully remote option. So that will go out tomorrow and the request for any changes will be on the same timeline. So essentially if students are coming one day a week, we would, if, and we don't hear from parents, we would presume that, that they wish for their children to come five days a week. And if, but we recognize that some folks may like one day a week, but maybe not be as excited about five days a week, or maybe we're fully remote, but if there's a five-day option, would opt to choose that five-day in-person option. So we're aware that we may not get the exact same breakdown that we currently have with the one-day model. So that, we're planning to send that out tomorrow and the three-day rotating schedule will take place over a regular five-day week. So it's just, it's just a matter of, of how classes fit in, in this model to accommodate the smaller group sizes. So Becca can go into some more detail about that, if that's helpful before you ask specific questions of us, or you can ask questions now and then Becca can go into more details about that, the schedule rotation. I'm not sure what you prefer.
I'll leave it up to the board. I would advocate that we let Becca and kind of get it all out on the table and then ask some questions.
Agreed.
Unless there's something completely urgent that you just got to get off your chest. I didn't think so. All right. What do you got, Becca?
Hi. So it's going to, it's going to sound a little confusing and I apologize ahead of time for that. Definitely, once we have our February 19th data and we know what the demands on our space are going to be, we'll be able to give concrete schedules to students and their families for when they return to in-person. But basically, we have, as Principal Snyder said, we have a three-day rotating schedule overlaying a five day. So if I put myself in the place of a seventh or eighth grade student, for seventh and eighth grade, every day they will have math. That is one core content area that they will engage in every day with their teacher. And but they will have two of their three other core subjects that day. That's the reason for the three-day rotating cycle is so that over the course of three days, the seventh and eighth grade students miss one of either science, social studies or ELA compared to a normal five-day schedule. Then they also have a rotating UA schedule that they cycle through over the course of three days. There's the flex blocks, which right now we have scheduled between second and third periods and that's on a five-day schedule. And we needed that for, based, well, for a lot of reasons, to incorporate things that are really important to our teams. For example, incorporating advisory, but as a system, a K to eight system, we had to have a five-day component so that those pieces could all operate together as well. For example, special education services would be an, an example that I think most people could understand why that would be necessary. So that's for seventh and eighth grade. For sixth grade, it's a little bit different again, because the teaming is different for sixth grade. Every day, the students will see their two sixth grade core teachers and those core teachers will be planning their units such that they'll either be integrating, for example, they might have an integrated ELA and social studies course, or it might be that Mrs. Johnson spends three days focusing on an ELA component and then on the fourth or the fifth day, she might incorporate some social studies. Miss, the same decisions we made, being made for, for math and science by Mr. La Croix. The other two parts of the day, they'll be engaging in UAs with as many integration opportunities as the team is pulling together to create for students. We're not really sure yet what that will, will look like, but there will be a strong component of UA within the student stays. And there also will be a flex blocks, flex block again between second and third period to allow for additional UAs that, you know, as the weather gets better, for example, to be able to participate in, in music outdoors as well as special education services, SEL, the type, those types of activities. I think that's, it's about, I hope that that helps a little bit to understand kind of the way that all the systems are going to come into play. Happy to answer any other questions that you have about that.
Thank you. It looks great. I think the part that might just as it gets sent out and distributed to the public and cascaded down the three-day, just clarity around the, the three, three models that rotate through the five-day sequence that, you know, originally when I saw it, it kind of threw me too. So just finding a way to communicate that so that everyone understands it's a full five days, just rotates.
I think, I think it's, you know, it's similar to some high schools in that, you know, on Monday, the first week, it's an A day, but the next week, Monday will be a C day. And you know what I mean? Like they, so kids will have to know if it's an A day, B day or a C day, it will always line up with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So that'll be like one of the shifts, I think, that, that kids need to know that, that parents may not need to be as involved in the A, B and C day piece.
I suspect we'll have lots of signs around the building. It's an A day. It's a B day.
We're planning to put them outside of every door.
So, so this is great. I've got a quick question. I mean, this is great and thank you for your work, getting our students back in five days a week. And I know that there's a lot of work, not only by the administration, but the teachers too. Can you share a little bit more about the integrated UAs? There's a, you know, each day it looks like there's either, you know, two, what, either two integrated UAs or an integrated UA and then a UA. Can you just share a little bit more with us about what, what those classes look like?
It depends a little bit about which grade level you're talking about, because the model isn't the same for seven, eight as it is for, for sixth grade. But basically, within sixth grade in particular, we're just building a team of four teachers that will include the two classroom teachers and two UA teachers that will be working together just to, to plan the best modes of instruction for, for students. So we'll, we're hoping to, to plan together as a team to allow for student learning to take place across all four of the, of the components, main components of the students' day that will tie together in various ways to support student learning in all their core, core content areas.
Yeah, thank you. And then I also think it's fantastic that math is on every day, A, B and C. Fantastic. I know you had to kind of shift some things so that's other core classes are missed every third day, which it seems like that's a, you know, that's, that's not, that's not, that's not that much, right? One out of three days. But can you share a little bit more about from a scheduling standpoint, why some of the core needs to be skipped? I'm sure it has to do with staffing. I just want to make sure we explain it to, to folk, you know, anyone.
The, the reason that it's necessary is that we have more groups of students than we have classroom teachers. And so in order for the classroom teachers to be able to cycle through and give direct instruction with the groups of students, they, there are only so many periods in which they can, they can teach. So that's the, the reason for the need for the, the rotation. So it's, you know, if you have the, we have, we are staffed for a regular in-school, non-pandemic class sizes and we've had to increase the number of class sizes, and we've had to increase the number of groups that we have. And so, and so we've kind of come up with this, this way to make sure that students have the maximum time with their classroom teachers as they can while still having rich learning experiences throughout the school day.
Perfect. So there's smaller cohorts and the students are in the rooms and all the rooms are taken up. So you, you know, you, you just can't get the every grade, every class, every day taught. I got it. Thank you.
So like, as, as an example, in, in the seven, eight team, there's four teachers in that team or four, four core subject areas, but there's six groups. So they can't, they can't teach six classes at once with four teachers. So that, that's kind of the, the bottom line. And then just, just for full transparency too, by, by reallocating some of our staff to the middle school in the UA department. You know, there are some shifts and adjustments for elementary UA classes too. So, so there is like a school-wide impact here. We, we feel that it's, you know, there's trade-offs with everything and you have to decide what's an acceptable trade-off. We, we feel, we feel comfortable with this, but it's not without some adjustment and sacrifice on the elementary teachers' parts too. Just, you know, I think, I think our school is very much supportive of all of its constituencies. So, you know, we'll all work together to make this happen, but there, we, this does mean a greater allocation of UA staff towards the middle school for the third trimester.
With the shortened school day and missing out on some core subjects because of the limitations that you have with staff and, and space, are you, do you think that you're confident that the curriculum will be covered? And are you using other things like asynchronous learning outside of the school day to make sure that kids cover the curriculum? Or is this just going to be a tough year to, to accomplish that because of COVID?
So I, I think that the, the students have, have really benefited from the model that we've been in so far this year in the amount of, of work that the teachers, that teachers have been able to do with them. I think that Dr. Hobbs can, can speak to this as well. We've been having conversations across the SAU within our Southeasters group and on, you know, on our professional networks as well about how the country and all of us are going to respond with the interruption of learning that's taken place and the results of the pandemic. This year, student learning is not, we're not going to, to cover as much as, as we normally would in a given year. I, I don't think there are very many places across the country that can say that they have been able to do that and realistically will. But what we are planning is, is how we're going to spend the next two years is what research says it will take to, to cover those, those losses that have happened. I think that, you know, the instructor, the assessments that we use are going to be really helpful in identifying what gaps this has created and addressing them. And conversations, our eighth-grade teachers are, we're starting facilitating those conversations with the freshman team from all the sending schools so that we'll know what was covered to mastery and what things were more of an exposure base, for example, with students. And so we're just going to count on, we thankfully have put in place over the last couple of years a really nice response to intervention program. And we'll be using that for individual students because of course we know that different students have responded differently to the pandemic and their learning. But also thinking about the ways that we can use the similar thinking to address whole classes of, of students and recognizing that we'll, we'll all have some work to do over the next couple of years. But I guess, you know, when, when I speak with parents about this, I don't want them to worry that their students are behind. Because behind what and behind whom? You know, this isn't a normal school year and, and we all are aware that it's going to take some, some pretty creative and, and, and good planning over the next couple of years to help get all of our students to where we wish them to be.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. If, if I can just add a little bit, we, Beck and I have talked a lot about that, that exact question. And first of all, I think, I think there's a point to be made about doing this trimester three. We've, NHS has put together a pretty robust academic program throughout trimester one and trimester two. And we're in a spot where, you know, getting face-to-face is very important. And we, we understand that as a, as a series of trade-offs. And I think the timing works for this. And, and second of all, I think it's, it's kind of a compliment to NHS. You guys have some significant tier-two programs. And as, as we press that and as we push that and as I ask those questions, the response is, is we need to let those tier-two programs do their work. We do, that's our product. We do it well. And when kids are in the building, we can recoup some of those learning losses. So I think Becca's spot on and, and I can assure you, we've got our finger on that issue.
Thank you, Dave. Thank, thank you, Becca. I'm really glad you guys pointed that out. And Becca, I especially like the, the way you phrased it as to the parents or who you're behind and, you know, we're all in this together. And, and so I'm confident that it's not necessarily catch-up as it is just kind of, you know, back to normalcy. I do have a question though around, so there are certain areas that are affected more than others, like the eighth graders who are transitioning into high school. Do we have any, any sort of synergies and alignment there to help? Not to catch them up, but to just prepare them for that next step in some of those areas that they might be missing this year? Like hurry up often, two-minute offense kind of stuff?
Yeah, I think that, that's definitely, is that me? Yeah, that's me. So you, you should be at our Southeast meeting, Greg. This is exactly what's on the tips of tongues across this Southeast New Hampshire. We are, we're looking at, to specifically answer your question, we're looking at those transitions very carefully. Right now, as the conduit, we're looking at the, there's a C to Summit program through Winnicott, which I'm sure you're familiar with. Basically bolstering that into something a lot more robust, something that wraps in interventions, something that wraps in ESY for our special ed students and hopefully leverages Title I as well. And I have to mention the CARES 2.0 money that we are anticipating. So, look, it's a matter, it's a matter of, of creating these bridges, creating this support. And I, I don't want to leave out the, just the connections that kids need, the social, emotional support as part of this. Because we all know that, you know, kids aren't going to recoup learning loss unless they're comfortable, unless they're happy to be there. So, so that's been a big focus as well in that, in this summer planning. We're actively working with the high school right now in developing those models. They actually have a pretty robust framework right now. But that, that's going to be presented at the high school level, which I'm sure we can reflect down here. Good question.
That would be nice to connect that. What's, what's going on at the high school level down, down here? Because I'm sure a lot of eighth-grade parents are asking that question as well.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to throw out there was that, you know, the, the eighth-grade algebra option for some additional work has, has still been in place this year even during remote teaching and will continue in eighth-grade math. And one of the, one of the outcomes too, was that we were able to offer on a voluntary basis for, for students who are interested in, and having some extra Spanish to maybe prepare for the Spanish II class at the high school going in. They, those students have been meeting with Senior Johnston regularly this year too. So, you know, we have been able to continue some of those options that, that we've had before for students. And then every year, there are transition meetings where the guidance departments meet together and have a chance to exchange some information too. So that, and special education as well. So those, just as Dave said, those things will actually be taking place in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah. And I'll reflect this in the future and not to go down a rabbit hole, but there are going to be some structural changes at Winnicott in terms of scheduling that are going to support those kids. The example that I would turn to is scheduling that GEO honors class that I know you guys are familiar with, as a year-long class rather than two trimesters, just to give that algebra boot camp for that first trimester of the year. Things like that, structures we can put in place, we're, we're hitting as hard as we can right now.
Yep. And I, I think that was implemented this, for this year's freshman class as well, correct?
It, it was and it worked. And we can keep it.
Yep. Great.
I've got a quick question around transportation. So how have things been going with both the bus routes for K through five? As well as parent drop-off and pickup? And what changes, if any, do we anticipate with increasing the number of students, cars, need for buses, et cetera, happening here?
So we've been experiencing some bus challenges, but I think it's more due to difficulties that the bus company is having maintaining drivers than it is necessarily with, with our students. So, so they've had some, you know, they've been short-staffed on some occasions. So it's been difficult for us to really gauge that. We, I, our numbers on the buses definitely went up with the one-day option. One thing I can tell you that, that may be preferable, we have had feedback from parents that were disappointed in the changes in timing. So for example, if sixth graders come on Monday and Tuesday, or one group comes on Monday, then bus seven might make three extra stops on Monday, but they might not need to make those three extra stops on Tuesday. And then they might need to make seven extra stops on Wednesday for the seventh graders. And so the timing has been off for some of the elementary students that were used to a particular time. So in fact, having the, the students that are going to ride the bus ride all five days may help with that concern that's been brought forward to us. I think we're going to have to go back and find out, once we get our numbers, we're going, if they're significantly different than what we currently have in the one-day option, we'll have to take a look and talk to the bus company again and see if, if there's a need to add, add buses or change routes due to, due to that influx. Right now, they've been able to accommodate them. And our guide has been, I think 24 students would be one per seat, which is what they've considered to be the max. We haven't reached that yet, but we've definitely gone up from early in the fall when it was just elementary. So, so it's, we've got growing pains for sure. The car line is still working. It's, it's a little slower on some days, but it's really, I mean, I should ask Becca and Ayesha because they're up front. I'm down at the bottom there. It seems, it seems to still be working okay. We have, you know, everyone has signs in the windows and we've been radioing and having kids come down when their cars are there. I know the line does go back down Atlantic Avenue a bit, but it doesn't, I don't think it ties up traffic. But I could, I could be wrong. Becca, can you speak to the front?
I think it's nice that parents know to stay off on the side. And so I, I feel like it's not, not, not stopping traffic on, on Atlantic. And it does, and it moves quite quickly. And not very long after we get the buses going, you're wrapping up the carpool line almost days, so.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I have heard that Atlantic gets a little bit dicey down closer to the water. But I, it, it kind of is what it is, right? So.
So quick question on the, on the sample schedule we have, and I'm looking at sixth grade and similarly to seventh and eighth. We have A, B, and C days. And then we'll go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So Thursday, Friday would be A, B, Monday. Following week would be C and so on and so forth. So we kind of have to keep that. And then we have four, is it cohorts in, say, sixth here, A, B, C, and R? So whatever, if it's an A, every day they will have those classes. And it kind of stays the same each day, kind of?
So I get, now that, now that you, now that you're reading it to me that way, so the, the 6A, 6B, 6C, the cohorts are not connected to the ABC day. So that's a really good point. We need to work on how we label things. I never realized that how confusing that would be. Yes, now that you're saying.
Cohort 6A on.
Well, we'll name the cohort something fun, like, you know, the, the Bears and the Jaguars and the, you know. So that, they're not actually connected to the ABC rotation. Those are really like the, the, like you said before, Namina, that it's ABCAB, and then the next week, C, A, B, C, A. Right. So that, it's that rotation through. The students themselves, like, they, they're, what cohort they are is not connected to that rotation.
Yeah. And, and that's fine. So like on a day B, 6A cohort, 6A would still have at 8:30 ELA and then UA3 and, and so on and so forth. So that, they, they will follow that kind of schedule every day. Okay.
Right. So they're scheduled, right. So they'll schedule, they'll have a four-period day schedule with a flex block in between that will, that will look the same every A day, will look the same every B day, and will look the same every C day. But we, it will not look the same every day.
Right. Yeah.
And we'll help them with that. I mean, that's confusing for anybody, but, so we'll, we'll have lots of signage. We'll have lots of, once we get these details panned out, much like the teams have done for their students all the way. And talking with teams today, they're like, it's, we keep having the first day of school. And that's, that's really what it's, it's been for us. And so we'll be sure and support students in giving them everything that they need so they know exactly where they need to be when.
Right. And what they need to bring in for the following day because it's going to be a little different, which I kind of like it. It gives them a little responsibility on packing and doing stuff. But on Greg's point too, on what are we going to do with some of these transition teams, that, that exact question came up at my parent-teacher conference. And, you know, as, as the teachers brought up an excellent point, each grade knows that what this year has been like. So seventh grade knows that sixth grade or where they have left off, or the teachers will communicate somehow. I'm glad to hear that they're doing that on a high school level, that hopefully the teachers will communicate and say, okay, well, this is where we kind of left off. This is where the gaps need to be filled. So that's kind of good to hear.
So on that, just quickly on that note, we've traditionally set up, we call them vertical team structures, where teachers, like for, for instance, all the math teachers, right, vertically, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, can sit down in a room and really align their curriculum. Usually that's been done on professional development days. We do have two spring professional development days scheduled. We'll talk, we'll talk about what that schedule looks like, but we'll get those people together.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions?
I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you guys have done. This is, there's so much light and hope in this that it's, it's exciting.
Yeah, I would echo that as well. Thank you very much for all the hard work. And I, I just wanted to point out a couple of things along the way. One, I really appreciate the efforts made to include, not that you weren't going to include it, but to make sure that the children have a well-balanced experience that includes a healthy dose of UA and that things didn't get sacrificed. And what had to get sacrificed just by necessity sort of was sacrificed evenly. Because I really do believe, I've stated this a million times, that the, the balance that Northampton has between the UAs and how they integrate into the curriculum as well as the core subjects is a really important part. And one of the things I value about the organization. And so I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into making sure that the students' lives are balanced that way. And I also want to obviously thank you guys for all the hard work that you've put in. We've asked a lot of questions along the way. And I know it's been frustrating at times, but I think we are all working towards the same goal. In fact, I know we all are. And so I really appreciate the transparency over the last couple of months and all the hard work on everyone's part. And congratulations to you. And please cascade that to your teams as well for all the hard work and flexibility that the staff is showing to pull this off.
Thank you. The, the staff is, you know, I just would echo how supportive and flexible that, that they have been and how supportive of one another's unique sets of circumstances that related to either their grade or their subject area. So we feel really fortunate to work with such a great group of people.
Okay, let's see where we're at. We are at written reports, I believe. Is that right? Yes. So the Northampton written report.
So that's me again. And actually, we've talked about most of it. So I don't want to like duplicate. I guess all I will just say with the food drive is we are over a thousand items. So that's pretty exciting. And the first grade teams will be organizing the pickup on Tuesday. We did want to highlight kindergarten registration. The two things I guess I would want to highlight is kindergarten registration is ongoing and folks are able to do that virtually through contacting Kelly. And all of the, all of the forums are on our website to, to fill in and sign up. And we require proof of residency, health records, and Kelly can help folks with all of that. And the last thing is we do have student government sponsoring, School Board Candidate Night next week on February 17th. So we'd love to have whoever. So we'd love to have whoever would like to come. That will be in Zoom format as well. And the students, Becca could even speak to what they've been working on for questions. Do you want to pop in about that?
Sure. And I just like, for everyone who's watching, and the information is there on our school website. So the Zoom link and, and everything that you'll need to be able to join that is, is there. Yeah, so we've actually, I had the pleasure of, of working with the seventh and eighth grade students today to talk about just what it is the school board does and talk about how important the selection is and, and having them help us brainstorm the questions for the candidates. So we're just beginning that process and, and working with the student government members themselves to, to plan out the, the evening.
And that, just the last thing is that parent conferences went really well again last week. And the Zoom format actually does make it easier for a lot of parents who don't have to leave work to have their conference that way. And the teachers really dedicated a lot of time and energy to this mid-trimester conference time. So particularly the middle school grades, it takes a, it takes a village with the, with the team. So they've done a great job and, and we're very appreciative of all the parents who wanted to check in about their students' progress.
Hey, Susan, just out of curiosity, and, and not, not to tie you to this, but if you have, if you were to look into the future, do you think Zoom or video parent teacher conferences might be something that is helpful for teachers and parents in the future, even when we go, you know, back to normal?
I really do. I, I feel like, you know, I feel like there probably will still be a place for the in-person conference. If, if a teacher wants to show student work right at the table, but I also feel like particularly the, the the off-hours time. So if a parent, you know, can only do a conference at six thirty at night, or, you know, a time that's really difficult for a teacher, they might be able to manage it much more easily if it could be a Zoom. So I, I think that, I think that there's a place for it for sure. I, I would imagine that there's other ways, you know, other, other meetings that we have within, within our school and within the district. We probably would still utilize Zoom after this. I think we've all grown and learned a lot about meeting in this way. So, yeah, I, I, I do think it's something that we would keep in some way, shape, or form.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I would, I would support that as, and I, I try not to personalize, but I will here. As a parent of multiples, not only in same school, but in different schools, the Zoom conferences have been infinitely better for us. So I think that's a, a great point and something to consider as we move forward. All right, moving on to our finance report. Matt?
Thank you. So we've included three reports on board docs, the fiscal year-to-date expenditure report and revenue report, as well as the, the audit governance letter that wraps up the audit from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. So there are just a few notes on these reports, the first of which is on the expenditure report. I've reported in previous months that, you know, we are tracking well. There are a few accounts that we are over budget on that you're all aware of. That includes, you know, on the building side, you know, equipment, some of our technology accounts. But I do want to point out the substitute salary account on page one. You'll see we're over budget by almost sixty-five thousand dollars. I have mentioned this previously, but I just want to remind you that, that, that account will continue to go into deficit. That is the, the salaries for our long-term subs that are servicing our remote learners. Additionally, further down on page one, you'll see our special education account, or entire department is, is over budget by hundred, just about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. This isn't necessarily new from prior months, but I will note that we do anticipate some additional costs in this account upwards of, you know, potentially thirty, forty thousand dollars more so. That being said, we are, we have, you know, we have recognized savings with some, some salary accounts with our benefits. So we are on track to, to finish the year, you know, you know, fairly well. Understanding that we will likely have additional costs, whether it's tents, whether it's other resources as we bring kids back into the school. There, there will certainly be some, some unanticipated costs that were not included in the budget. So moving on to the revenue side, you know, what previously reported on the, the excess revenue that we've received via health insurance rebates, the REAP grants, as well as the CARES, the, the CARES Act, federal stimulus funds. You know, we had, on the first round, we received just over fourteen thousand dollars. The second round, which was the supplemental public school response fund, we received almost sixty-six thousand dollars. That was part of that original CARES fund. It just came through the state. And the, the third round, which I had speculated on at the last meeting, was the second stimulus act or, or fund that, that did pass. And we did, we did receive allocation of those funds. And it's, it's just over twenty-five thousand dollars that we're, that we will be receiving. So those are all funds that we will be able to utilize for COVID-specific expenditures. The SAU as a whole received this for the second round, received about one point five million dollars. Unfortunately, Hampton, Northampton received only the twenty-five thousand. However, Northampton students will certainly benefit from the funds that the Winnicott School District received. Winnicott received almost six hundred thousand dollars. And I know we will be utilizing those funds to address, you know, some of those learning loss items that, that Dave Becca touched upon earlier, you know, looking at, you know, ramping up some of the summer work to, to address these issues. And as I'm sure you've all noted, there's a looming third, you know, stimulus package that, or act that could be coming down the pipe, which I would anticipate will include more school funding. So that's something that we're monitoring and I'll certainly report back once we receive any word on that. So the third item was the audit governance report. So this, this finalizes the audit process from twenty nineteen, twenty. I had reported back on the preliminary results back in September. And nothing, nothing has changed since then. We've just, you know, we've, we've added the management discussion analysis. You know, we've closed the books at this point. The two, the two findings that we, or not findings, two recommendations that our auditors, Plazek and Sanderson noted was the school board poll, or the school district policies, which we're all aware of are not updated. In which case, we, in twenty nineteen, we did put together a policy committee to address that. And secondarily, I'm actually, I didn't, we were, this was not included in the preliminary audit results was a crowdfunding recommendation, recommendation. So that really relates to the policies. We do not have a crowdfunding policy. So they're recommending that we add one. As you know, this past spring and summer, we had, we had launched a food service campaign via GoFundMe to raise money to support our families and provide free meals from the spring through the summer. And we don't have a policy that, you know, that addresses crowdfunding. That being said, we did follow, you know, fundraising, fundraising protocol in regards to, you know, utilizing the proper controls. You know, for example, we had, the, the funds came directly from the education platform on GoFundMe to the district. There were multiple, there was some separation of duties between the organizer, which was myself and the, the receipt at the district level, which was, which was Nancy Tuttle. So everything was done properly, but we do need to add a policy. So that will be online or in queue for the, for the policy committee when they, when they're able to get to it. I know there's a lot of policies on tap, but they will certainly add that item as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to any of these three reports.
Any questions for Matt? All right, thank you, Matt. I see that our, for six years I've been on this board and every year we have from our, from this report, from Plazek and Sanders, we get criticized for our lack of timely deposits of funds. And this year it didn't show up. So good job getting that one off the table.
They must have missed it. I'm sure we were late on a couple.
Yeah, I think it's just part of the process where things end up sitting because of timing.
I don't want to get too cocky, because that's, that's an easy one.
It is. I was shocked not to see it. So, good job. Okay, moving on to policies, as Matt just mentioned, we have a, oh, about half a dozen or so policies here. This is part of our updating as well as consolidating ourselves across the SAU so that all of our policies in the districts read similarly. This is a first read. So if anyone has any questions right now, we can open the floor. Otherwise, we will go on to a second read at the next meeting.
Yeah, just a quick comment. So a couple of these are required by law. And then there's a whole series of health and safety requirements. I think the administration did a great job making sure that they spoke with the nurses to make sure that, across the SAU, to make sure that these made, these made sense. We had some good conversation around them and are happy to present them as a first read. There's also a couple that need to be withdrawn because we're being replaced. Feel free to read them if you'd like. But you don't have to.
Thank you, Tom. For those at home that don't know, Tom had graciously volunteered to be our policy emeritus. So I expect next year he will maintain that role as well forever. Okay, next, we have under personnel, we have a nomination. I believe we will do that non-public, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then just a quick update, our next meeting dates, as Becca mentioned, Candidates Night for Northampton School Board is Wednesday, February seventeenth at six P M. That'll be done through Zoom. We have four candidates for two open seats next year. So it's going to be a barn burner. Be sure to show up. Northampton's regularly next scheduled school board meeting is Thursday, March fourth at six thirty P M. That will probably be a Zoom. But there might be a chance we could do that one live. We had managed to get into a couple live situations earlier this year at the high school auditorium. So we'll, we'll let, we'll let the public know if that changes. School District Voting Day, Tuesday, March ninth, and then our O C meeting on Thursday, March eleventh rounds it out. So at this point, I believe we're going to move to a non-public. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion at their non-public session under RSA ninety-one, A three, two, Bravo.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I believe you have a non-public Zoom meeting waiting for you in your SAU email. So we will sign off of this meeting. And we will sign on to that one.
We need to vote on that, Greg.
I'm sorry, don't sign off yet. We didn't vote.
Yep, gotta have that vote.
All right, roll call.
Cindy Burke?
Here.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Armina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes, and my wife has left the room, so.
Okay, so you guys are officially going into non-public at seven thirty-five P M. Members are here. Recording has started.
Like to make a motion to come out of non-public.
I'll second. Do we need a roll call vote on that?
Yes. Cindy Burke?
Present alone.
Yes or no to resume the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Armina Peterson?
Yes.
And Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Okay, I have the public meeting resumed at eight oh six P M.
All right, thank you. We have one motion nomination on the floor. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate, I'd like to accept the nomination of the interim superintendent of Brenda Conley for B C B A effective three one twenty-one.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Armina Peterson?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
And Cindy Burke?
Yes, thank you for putting me last.
I was gonna say, she did you last.
I thought I'm just gonna do it that way. I'll give her a chance.
Just follow the crowd, Cindy.
I've got to vote it. I've got that vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. And I think that is everything on our nomination. Thank you everyone for attending. Do we have a motion to? I'll second that. Johanne's unanimous. Thank you, Rhonda. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Bye-bye.